I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Highland Park, Illinois, Monday, September 8th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman here.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Present.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Here.
Mayor Roderick.
Here. We have a quorum. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 11th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the warrant list? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia.
Aye.
Councilmember Littler.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Aye.
Mayor Roderick.
Aye. That's seven ayes, no nays. The warrant list is approved. Our next item is the report of the mayor. At every city council meeting since the heinous terrorist attacks on Israeli civilians and other residents of Israel on October 7th, 2023, we have remembered the people of all ages and multiple nationalities who were taken hostage, especially those who continue to be held against their will in Gaza. Earlier this month, we marked an incredible 700 days since this horrific act of violence. And I just need to say that we in Highland Park continue to stand in solidarity with the loved ones here in Highland Park, in the United States, and in Israel, and around the world who wait for the return of their family members. Last week, in response to news about federal immigration enforcement operations based out of Lake County, the city issued a statement underscoring Highland Park's commitment to our values. Before we continue our business for the evening, I'd like to read that statement. "The city of Highland Park is proud to be an affirming and welcoming place that celebrates the rich diversity of everyone who lives, works, studies, and visits our community. True to our value statement, Highland Park is committed to ensuring that our local priorities and policies nurture an inclusive environment and contribute to a more just and equitable future. Highland Park honors the contributions of immigrants across all sectors, from the arts to business to healthcare and more. The safety and trust of all members of our community is of paramount importance. The city recognizes that individuals may be concerned about recent reports of potential federal operations in the state of Illinois. In alignment with state of Illinois law, local law enforcement agencies may not participate, support, or assist in any capacity with immigration enforcement operations. Immigration enforcement remains the purview and responsibility of federal agencies. The city is committed to protecting and serving the community and recognizing the dignity of all persons regardless of their national origin or immigration status. In line with the 10 shared principles of public safety, this is a core value of the Highland Park Police Department and one shared by all representatives of the city. During rapidly evolving, complex situations such as this, it's important to seek out information from trusted sources. The city partners with social service agencies to provide informational resources to community members about a variety of issues that impact quality of life in our community, including immigration. The North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic offers a wealth of information about immigration, domestic violence, and housing on its website, which is nslegalaid.org. To learn more about Highland Park's commitment to promoting an inclusive environment where all are welcome, please visit cityhpil.com/values. The North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic has been working to educate and empower members of our immigrant community by helping them to understand their rights, whether they have DACA, temporary protected status, or another immigration status. The clinic recommends that everyone should be aware of the following key rights regardless of legal status. One, right to remain silent. If approached by police, immigration agents, or other officials, you have the right to remain silent and do not have to answer any questions about your nationality or immigration status. Two, right to an attorney. You have the right to speak with an attorney before answering any questions or signing any documents. Three, protection against unlawful searches. If immigration officers ask to come into your home, they must have a valid warrant signed by a judge to enter without your permission. For more information, please visit nslegalaid.org." I have no appointments this evening. We do have two proclamations this evening. Each year from September 15th to October 15th, we celebrate the many contributions of our Latino community members during Hispanic Heritage Month. Tonight, we are delighted to welcome representatives of Jocelyn to the podium to read the proclamation in Spanish and to share a few words. Is that the case?
Pablo's here.
Pablo's here. All right. Wait, I have more. Jocelyn has been a trusted resource. I know you in so many capacities that I didn't even think about the Jocelyn connection, and I apologize for that because you are so many things to so many people. For more than 70 years, Jocelyn has been a trusted resource for community mental health care in Lake and Northern Cook Counties. Jocelyn focuses on those who cannot access care due to barriers of income, language, or distance. In addition to the Resiliency Division's partnership with Jocelyn, over the past year, the Highland Park Senior Center and Jocelyn have partnered to deliver high-quality bilingual services to Hispanic-Latino seniors. This twice-weekly onsite programming expanded the senior center's Spanish-language programming, which also includes screenings of Spanish-language movies and loteria, among other activities. We're so grateful for the ways in which this partnership with Jocelyn has facilitated expanded services to bilingual and Spanish-speaking seniors. Thank you to everyone from Jocelyn who has joined us this evening. Jocelyn Board of Immediate Past President, Pablo Alvarez, CEO and President, Susan Roscoe, and Waystroke participants Maria Luisa Rosales, Jorge Rodriguez Rosales, Esther Haran, Marcelina Castrejon, and Orellia Melhor. We also would like to recognize City of Highland Park's senior staff, including Senior Services Manager Laura Frye. At this time, we would like to invite Pablo and Susan to the podium. Pablo will graciously read the proclamation for us in Spanish before Jocelyn's presentation.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Reconocimiento del mes de la herencia hispana. Considerando que el mes nacional de la herencia hispana se celebra en los Estados Unidos del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre. La observancia se introdujo por primera vez en 1968 como semana de la herencia hispana bajo el presidente Johnson, y se fue ampliada por el presidente Reagan en 1988 para cubrir un periodo de 30 días. Y considerando que la comunidad hispana representó la mitad del crecimiento de la población de la nación en la última década. Y considerando que para el año 2050 se espera que 30% de nuestra nación sea ascendencia hispana. Y considerando que la comunidad hispana representa un mosaico multiracial diverso. Y considerando que en honor al mes nacional de la herencia hispana, la ciudad de Highland Park se complace en celebrar a la comunidad hispana, Latino, X en toda nuestra ciudad. Y considerando que el mes de la herencia hispana celebra la historia, las tradiciones, las culturas de los residentes hispanos y latinos X en Highland Park. Admiramos las invaluable formas en las que contribuyen a nuestra ciudad aportando rica diversidad, contribuciones, y crecimiento a nuestra comunidad. Y por lo tanto, conmemoramos este mes reconocido y dedicándonos a trabajar juntos para abordar los desafíos que aún enfrentan nuestra población de hispanos y latinos. Por lo tanto, durante el mes nacional de la herencia hispana reafirmamos que la diversidad y la inclusión son una de las mayores fortalezas de nuestra comunidad. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Nancy Roderick, Alcaldeza de la ciudad de Highland Park junto al Consejo Municipal y de la ciudad de Highland Park, proclamo y pido que ciudadano reconozca a celebrar, a celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana y cada celebre a la comunidad latino desde el 15 de diciembre 2025 al día 15 de octubre de 2025. Muchas gracias.
And I'd love to thank the city of Highland Park for welcoming Jocelyn to the community and to Laura Frye for our partnership at the Highland Park Senior Center. So you may know that Jocelyn actually was founded 75 years ago, and for a number of years, we were in the basement of the Highland Park Hospital before we had our own home. But we were very happy to come back to Highland Park two years ago through our merger with Family Service of Lake County. And through that merger, we acquired the Waystroke-Jocelyn program, which is a Latino program for after-school children and seniors. And so the home that we had was, it was needing some love, and we needed a new home to adequately support the families that we were working with. So we were able to expand our location at Highland Park in Central, and that's where we have 45 children coming every day after school for therapy. And then Laura reached out earlier this year to say that they were looking to expand the programming and to make it more inclusive, and it was perfect timing. And Pablo and Andres got together and said, hey, would you like to get to meet? And one thing led to another, and now our seniors are meeting at the Highland Park Senior Center two days a week. Picture here of the senior prom last spring, which a number of the seniors participated in, as well as a number of other activities. And I have to say that the Senior Center has been so incredibly welcoming and has expanded its Latino programming to make our seniors feel very comfortable and supported. So I just wanted to thank you so very much for your support and for our partnership and for welcoming Jocelyn to the community. Absolutely. Thank you. So I just want to say thank you so much for celebrating with us tonight. We very much value our partnership and the meaningful and the fun programming that you are presenting at the Highland Park Senior Center. We also want to encourage everyone to visit the Highland Park Public Library's website at hplibrary.org to explore the outstanding Hispanic Heritage Month programming that's planned for patrons of all ages at the library. Several programs are featured on the next few slides, and we are so fortunate to have a library that's so dedicated to developing creative activities for all members of our community. On that note, September is also National Library Card Sign-up Month, so if you don't have your library card, now would be a great time to stop by the library and register for what is probably the most valuable card in your wallet. Be sure to visit hplibrary.org to learn more. On a more somber note, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, an opportunity to raise awareness around those affected by suicide and reduce the stigma surrounding this important topic. It's vital that we learn to identify the warning signs of suicide and how to connect at-risk individuals with appropriate care. Free and confidential help is available 24/7 via phone, text, or online services by dialing the National Suicide Prevention Hotline at 988. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we will have a speaker. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month to help promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention. It teaches how to help others, how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, or background. And whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death among young people, and whereas Highland Park is no different than any other community in the country but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, teachers, parents, as partners, in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public. And whereas the youth of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to regularly take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. Now therefore, I, Nancy Roderick, Mayor of the city of Highland Park and the city council, do hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and urge all residents to learn about available resources and how to talk about suicide without the risk of harm. I'd like to now invite to the podium the city's police social worker, Amy Bricker, to accept the proclamation. The city employs three social workers, one in police, one in senior services, and one in the Resiliency Division. The three professionals work very closely together to support the community. Social workers and police departments play a crucial role in crisis intervention, community outreach, and enhancing public safety through compassionate support and collaboration with our law enforcement professionals. If you could come forward. Thank you. Yeah. Do you have this?
It's been so long.
As many of us are aware, the federal government eliminated funding for specialized trained support for LGBTQ+ youth in crisis through the national hotline. In Illinois, however, LGBTQ+ callers will continue to receive specialized mental health support services as the Illinois Department of Human Services is working to expand the service. The Trevor Project also provides a suicide prevention hotline for LGBTQ+ youth at thetrevorproject.org. We have no other business from the mayor this evening. Do we have any business from the council? Seeing none? Thank you. Business from city staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to identify there are nine items on the omnibus agenda. All include detailed staff reports. All are recommended for approval. I just want to draw to the public's attention two items. And the first one, first item is item number two. This is an intergovernmental agreement with the Highland Park Library. The library's construction renovation project is currently underway, and they have asked for the city's assistance to provide emergency funding in the event that they needed. So Corporation Council has drafted an agreement that's recommended for approval. The IGA entails the city loaning to the library up to $1 million, again, for emergency expenditures only if warranted. This allows them, allowed them to maximize everything that they wanted to do as part of the construction project, but still have funding available again in the event an emergency arises. So that's recommended for approval. And then the other item, just for your attention, is item number six. So this is a follow-up to a January Committee of the Whole meeting when the Collaborative Community Housing Initiative, or CCHI, in partnership with the Housing Opportunity Corporation, submitted a request for funding to help them offset their expenses to establish their home right here in Highland Park at 1651 Richfield Avenue. This is a home for individuals with developmental disabilities. Their initial request was $400,000, and then later it increased to $500,000. The council, the committee, the whole was supportive of the request and directed the Housing Commission to review it thoroughly and come back with a recommendation. So staff guided them through that process. The Housing Commission is recommending $500,000 to support their initiative. I received a request from Councilmember Littler, Councilmember Center, just to talk about the Housing Trust Fund and where primarily those funds come from. So this is an independent fund of the city. We deposit funds from the payment in lieu as part of development projects, or when there's demolition tax, that tax revenue goes in, as well as demolition permits make up that fund. So there is a healthy fund balance, and the use of drawing down those funds would be appropriate for this type of project. And then, again, omnibus agenda is recommended for approval. And then I wanted to just provide a quick update on the place of remembrance. So the council established a place of remembrance working group that is guiding our community through this process. The mayor chairs that group. Councilmember Bloomberg is part of that group. Myself is the city manager. Brian Rome is the executive director. We have a representative of Jocelyn, so we're grateful for their participation as well. So again, this group is just guiding us through that process. This process entails significant public engagement, public feedback. We are communicating directly with victims, and then the reports and any recommendations are coming back to the mayor and city council for formal consideration. So I won't read this, but this is the place of remembrance objectives. This is detailed on our website. We also, early in the process, established what are the community values. And so these are the four values that we felt were paramount and served as the foundation for the working group's effort. We worked with a consultant called Due Tank, and again, they undertook a significant public engagement, as well as communication with victims, to understand what the community was looking for, for a place of remembrance. And so that public feedback helped us craft a request for qualifications, which was issued in April with proposals due at the end of May. This is the objective. Again, this is all on our website of what we were looking for in terms of design services. So we received a very great response from different consultants around the country in response to the RFQ. We narrowed down the proposals, and we interviewed four firms. And then we, this is the scope of work that we identified for the work that we were looking at. We interviewed four firms, and then at our last place of remembrance meeting, we reviewed the proposals at the public meeting, and then we will be coming back to the city council at a Committee of the Whole meeting at the next meeting for the council's consideration of a proposed contract with a consultant. This is the criteria that was very important for us as we evaluated all the proposals. And then we are going to be bringing forward one of the proposals and a recommendation to enter into an agreement with the firm, SWA. So just very briefly, you can see their relevant experience. They worked on the Sandy Hook Memorial, and then the other ones listed there. They have subconsultants, although they're an out-of-state firm. They have consultants in the Chicago area, very familiar with our community. And very important is they really emphasize their trauma-informed approach. And, and really, again, if you looked at the criteria there, they were just in line with everything that we were looking for, again, to take a look at a design that would meet the needs of the city, what we're looking for. And again, there's two locations that we've identified. So it's the current temporary place of remembrance, which is the Rose Garden next to City Hall, and then also a location at Port Clinton. So we'd be looking at those two areas. And again, coming at the next city council meeting to, for a full report and your consideration, and then with your approval, we'll enter into a contract with them, and then bring it back to a city council meeting for formal consideration, and then we'll continue with the process from there. Wanted to just give an update for the public's information. The consultant proposals are on our website, as well as the minutes from the last meeting. And very important is we're continuing to amplify services that are available to the public. So if anyone needs anything, they're welcome to contact us.
Thank you. And I think it's important to note that continuing public engagement is a priority as we move forward in the process, so.
Yes. And that concludes our staff report.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? So I don't have to. Something off the consent agenda.
Yeah, but we still have business from the public.
Yeah. No, it's fine.
I have a question and comment on the number six.
Yes. Okay. But we still have business from the public, so thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is business from the public. This is an opportu-- oh, you know what? Ashley, I'm reading your script. I need to call on the assistant to the city manager, Paul Bitzka. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is business from the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on a topic that is within the council's purview and jurisdiction, but is not listed in another location on the agenda. If you would like to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we ask that you wait until the agenda item is called, and we will give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on the omnibus consent agenda, please let us know if you would like us to remove the matter from the consolidated list so that you can speak about it. Please be aware that business from the public is not intended to be a forum for open dialogue or engagement with members of the city council, rather, it is intended as an opportunity to make comments to the city council. Please do not expect a response from anyone tonight. If appropriate, questions may be directed to the city manager or other city staff. All comments should be directed to the city council. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. We request that speakers refrain from throwing objects or using noise makers, and that the public not applaud or make other comments after any speaker. We ask that everyone be respectful, civil, and non-repetitive.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on an item not on tonight's More importantly, what are the bares doing? Have they not started yet?
My name is Dan Wagner. I live in the Sherwood Forest area of Highland Park. I'm going to start this off with a poem that you all know. I'll just read four words of it. First They Came Four. "I'm concerned about the anti-protest ordinance recently passed by this council. I believe that this ordinance has had some unintended consequences. As we've recently seen in Highwood, ICE has been harassing residents in residential areas. The recent Supreme Court ruling from this morning states that law enforcement may detain individuals based on their appearance to determine their immigration status. I would prefer to be able to protest against these detentions where they are happening. By making it a violation, by making it a violation to protest in residential areas, could inadvertently have ICE utilize the Highland Park Police to detain people for violating this ordinance, therefore reducing the impact of the protests. I would suggest to this council that the First Amendment right to protest be allowed in residential neighborhoods. Thank you."
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll continue with our scheduled business. Items one through nine have been grouped together for omnibus consideration. I am seeking a motion to approve items one through nine.
Should I pull six since three of us have questions?
If you have questions, feel free to pull an item.
I'm going to pull six, and I'd be happy to make a motion to approve one through five and seven through nine.
Second.
Okay. Any other items in addition to item six? Nope?
Nope.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia.
Aye.
Councilmember Littler.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Aye.
Mayor Roderick.
Aye. That's seven ayes, no nays. Items one through five and seven, eight, and nine have been approved. Item six is an ordinance amending the annual budget of the city of Highland Park, county of Lake, state of Illinois for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, to increase the Housing Trust Fund budget. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Littler?
I'd just like to ask for a couple points of clarification because I support this project, but I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate that the funding for the trust fund comes from these in lieu and all sorts of permitting things and whatnot. I just want to make sure there's no direct tax funds that are in that trust.
Not like property tax, no.
Correct. I mean, there's no taxes that are collected. I just want to double check.
No, I mean demolition tax revenue. Demolition tax revenue.
Yeah. Any kind of tax revenue. That's fine.
Well, demolition tax revenue?
Right.
So when there is a demolition, there is a tax. That money goes into the fund.
Right. But I'm just saying, we're not directly paying taxes.
There's no property tax revenue going into that fund.
Exactly. That's why I just wanted to ensure.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Center?
Yeah, thank you. Also, I think it's a wonderful project, but wanted to just understand what changed from the original application for 400,000 versus now asking for 500,000? And was it considered that that additional $100,000 be funded by the developers and organizations putting forth the project versus it coming out of the housing trust?
Thank you. That's a good question. Mayor, if I could defer to the applicant, just because it was their request, would you mind, Lori, coming?
Hi.
Hello.
So the question is why--
Please state your name for the record.
Sorry. Lori Williams.
Thank you.
And the question is, why was there an increase from 400 to 500? Is that correct?
That's right.
When we did-- When we did the study of our residents who needed the assistance, we found that there was more of a need than we thought, and so that is why we increased it by 100,000.
Great.
So that we could offer it to another family.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Ross?
I have one. And of course, I'm very supportive of this project, very excited about it. And it's, I support it coming from the housing trust fund and that it is helping low-income families. The question I have is around assessments. How will that be handled? If there's a special assessment, how will they afford it? Will it have to be carried by the rest of the residents, the owners? Like, how are you managing that?
We have a reserve fund. Part of our program for our operational budget is to have a reserve fund for things that come up over time, unexpected expenses.
Repairs.
And that's built into our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other council member? Oh, sorry, Corporation Council?
Mayor, just because this is now off the consent agenda and independent, I want to note that it will require, as a budget transfer, a supermajority vote of five.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Nope? Okay, great. Thank you so much for all very enthusiastic supporters of this project, and appreciate that you chose Highland Park as the place to locate it. I'm seeking a motion to approve item six.
Some moved.
One of you should be a second.
I'll be a second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Brockman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia.
Aye.
Councilmember Littler.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Aye.
Mayor Roderick.
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. Item six is approved. Thank you so much. Continuing on with other business, item number 10 is a public hearing, extension of the Ravinia Business District Special Service Area Number 17. In accordance with the Illinois Special Service Area Tax Law, 35 ILCS 200, Article 27, I hereby call to order the public hearing on the proposed renewal of the Ravinia District Special Service Area 17. In accordance with applicable law and requirements, notice that this public hearing was published on August 19, 2025, in the Daily Herald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Center.
Present.
Councilmember Brockman here. Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Present.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Here.
Mayor Roderick.
Here. We have a quorum. I hereby declare the public hearing on the proposed extension, a special service area number 17, open. I will now turn the public hearing over to City Manager Gita Newkirk for comments on the special service area.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Jamie Elder, our Business Development Manager. We do have a short presentation just to talk about the special service area and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, and thank you, members of the public, for allowing me to present on Ravinia's Special Service Area 17 and this possible extension. And so for a little background, the SSA 17 proposed extension will be for three years, from January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2028. And for those who don't know what the SSA is, it's to promote the growth and stability and long-term economic vitality of commercial and retail corridors within our community. And this is a particular corridor of Ravinia District that has the boundaries of B2 RW and RM2 zoning districts. And this is, basically, the boundaries include the commercial and mixed-use residential properties that fund this particular SSA. And annual levy is being proposed to increase from $90,000 to $110,000. And this is a note that this is the first increase in the levy since it was first approved back in 2014. And so those who don't know what the SSA is, it is basically a unique financing tool that's used to support implement an array of services to include special events and activities and physical improvements to a particular economic development corridor within a municipality. For a brief background on SSA 17, it was first established in January 1, 2014, and ran for a three-year period. It has been renewed three times since then, and so the current renewal goes through December 31, 2025. And we are proposing that it be extended another time. This is the current SSA 17 boundary map. Just an item of note, I know that our partners at the Ravinia Neighborhood Association, they do have Bayside included within their association as members, but Bayside is not included within our boundary map. And so here's a brief history of the last three years of the Ravinia SSA 17 accomplishments. And so we have coordinated collaborative store events, such as the Halloween Candy Stroll, the Holiday Cook-in Coco Carl, along with the very popular Food Truck Thursdays. These include over 15 food truck vendors from around the Chicagoland area, where we have music-themed nights, such as a Taylor Swift night put on by Amanda Bennett. Join me to highlight that. And also various other popular children activities. And then lastly, we do have seasonal decor and lighting. Other very important accomplishments have been, we had over eight new businesses created over the last three years, including Fluffy Bunny and Griswold Care this year, Spool Clothing's coming. We have other interested parties. 2024, we had one relocation of Happy Sushi, and then two more businesses created. In 2023, we had two businesses created as we're coming out of the pandemic. And so we see a lot of momentum happening in this particular district. So far, on the SSA 17 extension timeline, we did have a property owner meeting on May 28, do a virtual call, which they did ask us to submit three different budget types as we were looking to increase from 90,000. We also proposed 110,000, I believe 125,000, $135,000. And we did receive a letter from a particular property owner who did favor it, $110,000. And so on August 11, we proposed that to Committee of the Whole, in which the adoption of the ordinance occurred for the extension. And then on August 19, we did notify the public through a local newspaper, and we also sent out USPS-certified mailings to all affected property owners. And tonight's the public hearing, in which proceeds, there will be a 60-day objection period with a deadline on November 14. And then on November 24, the council could then have a consideration of extending the ordinance to extend SSA 17. So with that, turning back over.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the city council? Nope? Any questions or comments from the audience regarding this? No. Okay, so any questions that you may have need to be limited to the scope of this public hearing. There's a proposed extension. I will, seeing that there are no questions or comments, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some moved.
Second. Will the clerk call the vote, or do we do a--
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. This public hearing is closed. Individuals can also submit written comments to the attention of the city manager, Gita Newkirk. And following the statutorily required 60-day objection period, which ends on November 10, 2025, the city council is scheduled to consider the adoption of the renewal ordinance at the November 24, 2025 city council meeting. Any questions related to the proposed renewal of special service area 17 may be directed to the city manager's office at 847-926-1000. Thank you. Continuing on with our agenda, item 11 is an ordinance amending the City of Highland Park zoning ordinance of 1997 as amended regarding timeshare-related uses. Director Fontaine, is this your presentation?
So this is an ordinance amending the zoning code, excuse me, not the zoning code, I apologize.
This is a presentation. Item number 11 is-- It is not. Oh, I apologize. Okay.
You were right.
Yep. My apologies. I was thinking historic preservation, Mayor.
Apologize.
Yep, I got 11 and the other one reversed. As I was saying, this is a zoning code amendment related to timeshare-related uses. Staff and the Plan and Design Commission recommend amending the zoning code related to timeshare uses. As you may recall, council, on January 27, council adopted a red flag resolution directing the Plan and Design Commission's staff to evaluate and recommend whether and to what extent the zoning code should be amended to prohibit or otherwise regulate timeshare-related uses of property in various zoning districts throughout the city, as well as other regulations concerning this or similar uses as may be necessary. And so we did, Madam Mayor. The Plan and Design Commission held three public hearings in May, June, and August with regard to this matter. And on August 19, the commission recommended approval five to zero. The proposed amendment, and I won't read the actual definition, but we do have it here should we want to refer to it. It defines timeshare-related use. It adds timeshare-related uses to what's called our table of allowable uses as a conditional use in non-residential zoning districts, except for public activity, healthcare, B1, B1A, B2, and B2 RW zoning districts. It makes explicit that the term "short-term rental," as defined, does not include timeshare-related uses. And it also makes sure that, makes explicit that timeshare-related uses are prohibited as accessory or principal uses within single-family residential uses. Two parts of the code that I just mentioned were amended, are proposed to be amended, section 202, which is definitions, and section 404, related to accessory uses. Here you'll see that we put there the timeshare-related use definition, as you saw on the previous slide. We also insert the term "timeshare-related uses" in the definition for "short-term rental," essentially explaining what uses are excluded from being considered a short-term rental. And then finally, on this slide, we have "timeshare-related use as accessory or principal use is prohibited within single-family residential uses." Real important provision there. And then we amended the table of allowable uses, Table 15490, to allow timeshare-related uses as conditional uses only in the following districts as shown here. As you recall, just a moment ago, I explained the districts that were excluded, that were business-related. These are the districts that are included, and they are specifically B3, B44, B45, B46, B4BG, and B5I, NCDRO, which is an overlay district applied to our B5 district, as you may recall. So that's the other element of this amendment before you this evening. And our rationale of timeshare-related uses are often, although not necessarily associated with either vacation or some type of limited, non-overlapping shared use. They're similar to short-term rentals, hotel-motel establishments in terms of their land use externalities, occupancy turnover by individuals or groups specifically. That's the end of my presentation, Madam Mayor. I'm here for questions, should you have any?
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Center?
Thanks for the presentation. So help me understand a little bit about how the proposal, the proposed use or lack thereof of timeshare would be different than short-term rentals, like in just plain English.
I can--
Specifically--
Okay, yeah. Steve, if you-- Timeshare deals with the way in which a property is owned, the actual title, and we're talking about possible fractional ownership. A broader use is the way in which, short-term rentals is the way in which property is used as opposed to owned. And we have a requirement in our code, or regulation in our code, governing short-term rentals, allowing them as accessory uses, but only under very limited circumstances.
Okay, so the proposal would restrict, for example, Resident A and Resident B deciding to form an LLC to purchase a residence and split that 50% of the year?
Essentially, yes. If they meet the definition of timeshare as governed by the Illinois Timeshare Act. It regulates the ownership as opposed to timeshare, which regulates the use, I'm sorry, short-term rental, which regulates the use.
Any other questions from the council?
Hi, do we have one?
Sure.
So I'm going to take that one step further, because I was thinking in terms of like an LLC, which one could purchase, but in fact, it could be made up of several different groups that are part of the LLC, but they actually own the property. So what if you had three family members? Small, you know, different family units, but they all own the property together? In theory, if they don't all live there as one unit, isn't that a timeshare?
There's other bases that form the definition as part, it's a little more complicated, as part of the Illinois Timeshare Act. There's got to be pursuant, it's got to be pursuant to a plan, and it's got to deal, it deals with the way in which the fractional ownership is divided.
So that was my question, because if it's a family, we all could define family differently, an LLC can define its partnership differently, but what, it's the actual, like if there was income, because you were renting it out--
Correct.
--and different groups were splitting it, isn't that the behavior we're trying to prevent in the timeshare?
Where you give exclusive right to use and own to some, but not all, or not during the same exact time period.
And that's why the short-term, long-term, it's one thing, but if you were splitting your quarterly timeshare portion of it, or charged a different revenue to one group, one part of the group, is that the behavior we're trying to avoid here?
That is among the behaviors that we're trying to avoid. It's not a novel concept.
Right.
Timeshare, and we deliberately used the term that was devised in the Illinois State statute, so we're not creating a new box here. And I would argue that the ability to timeshare property is currently not allowed in Highland Park. I told you that back in January, because it is not permitted anywhere, and it's nowhere to be found in our code. It's not a defined term, and it's not in our code. Anything that's not expressly allowed, either as a permitted or a conditional use, is prohibited. So what we're doing here, and clearly, at least one recent owner of a property argued with us that it is allowed. What we're trying to do is basically clear that up and confirm what our understanding has been, is that the concept of timesharing property in Highland Park is not allowed. Now, interestingly, we actually do allow it. If anything, expanded the ability to do timeshare, because we are allowing it in certain areas and in certain non-residential areas, so business properties. So we've not only cleaned it up in single-family residential, but acknowledged that it may exist elsewhere.
Thank you.
Want to follow up? Sure.
Is the delineation, though, the ultimate use of that potential timeshare property in that it's really about, not about owners on the title of the asset versus potentially renting that out to other users for income-producing or other reasons? Like, those to me feel like two different things.
It's actually, Councilmember Center, it's a combination of those. I was trying to answer your first question about distinguishing timeshare versus short-term rental, but if you're looking strictly at the definition of timeshare, you are looking at a combination of ownership and use.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Any members of the public have any comments or statements? Please come forward and share your name for the record and--
My name is Howard Serlin. Pardon me, I live at 2650 Point Lane in Highland Park.
Okay.
And I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you. Please share your comments.
I just wanted to address the question about three families owning a property, which is a common situation. In my mind, in distinguishing that between timeshare, is where one family would own the property, say, for three months. Second family would own it for the next three months, and so on. That splits it up into timesharing, whereas in the typical three-family situation where they're related, but you might have three families, they share at the end of the year with all of the profits, because they are owners throughout the year. So it's not timeshare, it's a joint ownership. So I hope to clarify the question-- So I hope to clarify the question of the three families, because that's what ran through my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members, any other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? No? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
The only other point, the only other point that I would make is that this ordinance is generally applicable throughout Highland Park. It may be that the issue is brought to our attention because of one particular property, but this ordinance is generally applicable. It is not a single-directed or single-directed focused document.
Great point. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve Item 11?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions on Item 11? No? Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Senator?
You can come back around, I mean.
Councilmember Brockman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Center?
Present.
Aye.
Mayor Roteran? Aye. Six ayes, one nay, one present. Item 11 is approved. Thank you. Item 12 is an ordinance amending Section 24.026 of the Highland Park Code of 1968 as amended regarding non-contiguous historic districts.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends amending Chapter 24 to require owner consent for all non-contiguous local historic district nominations, consistent with the owner consent requirement for local landmark designations. Non-contiguous local historic districts, the piece of code that we're talking about here this evening was adopted as a preservation tool in Highland Park in 2005. A non-contiguous historic district is a district composed of architectural/historically significant resources that are united by a theme rather than geographic proximity. So like, common architect, architectural style, person of importance, use, or pattern of historic development would be the organizing theme of a non-contiguous local historic district, as by way of example there. Other communities have successfully created non-contiguous local historic districts throughout the nation and locally in our area. It's important for Council to just step back into past legislative efforts and considerations. There is a considerable policy looking, if you will, on historic preservation back in 17 and 2018. And in May of 2018, City Council adopted an ordinance removing the provisions for involuntary local landmark designations. This amendment, however, did not remove the provision for involuntary property inclusion in non-contiguous local historic district nominations. So in terms of policy rationale for the proposed amendment, staff posit that the local landmark designation provisions of the city code sufficiently address individual non-contiguous properties that qualify for preservation. So per Section 24025, local landmark designation, it requires local consent, excuse me, requires owner consent, and that's as of 2018. Both local landmark designation and non-contiguous historic districts provide regulatory tools that address geographically dispersed architectural and historic resource preservation in the city. And so thus, amending the code to require owner consent for non-contiguous local historic districts will align with the intent of the Council's 2018 amendment to Chapter 24 by removing an internal inconsistency regarding the owner consent provisions for local landmark designation and non-contiguous local historic districts. So what will the proposed changes do? It will prohibit the inclusion of a property from consideration in the proposed non-contiguous local historic district without owner consent. It aligns with the intent of Council's 2018 amendment requiring owner consent for local landmark designation. It, however, leaves unchanged owner consent requirements for contiguous local historic districts. We believe that's an important provision not to change, as geographically contiguous local historic districts frequently include property owners that do not consent. Recommendation: Staff recommends amending Chapter 24 to require owner consent for all non-contiguous local historic district nominations, consistent with the owner consent requirement for local landmark designations. If adopted, staff requests feedback as to whether the proposed change should apply to the non-contiguous historic district nomination the city received on September 3, 2025. The purpose of tonight's meeting is not to discuss or deliberate on that nomination, Madam Mayor and Council, but rather, staff do need clarity, and clarity just for the record, as to whether or not the ordinance before you should apply to that particular nomination. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Bloomberg?
So, as you know, Director Fontaine, I'm the liaison of the Historic Preservation Commission. I also held that role in 2017 when we abrogated the involuntary landmarking ordinance. I don't see that that policy has anything to do with non-contiguous districts if it doesn't also apply to contiguous districts. I don't understand that distinction. And the reason I don't understand it is there is no such distinction. Both districts are permitted to be passed with a limited number of residents within those districts consenting. I'm also disturbed that this should come before the City Council without being heard before the Historic Preservation Commission. There isn't the urgency, and there is an emergency or a special meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission being held, and there is no reason why this shouldn't have been considered first. They can opine on this, they can advise the Council about this, they can address the specific policy issues that you and I have each raised separately and distinctly, and then we can decide what the policy ought to be, whether it should be changed or not, and then the Commission can apply whatever the results of that decision are to hearing the application for the non-contiguous district. I understand that there is a property that is affected by this outcome, but to open a tender wound of my own, I'm generally opposed to changing the law to accommodate an individual under unique circumstances. I don't think this is appropriate. It violates our procedural methodology as we address these things, and there isn't the urgency that this has to be done in this order.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the City Council on this item? Councilmember Senator?
I just want to confirm that a yes vote tonight would align this with the previous...
Council policy.
Policy, thank you, Mayor, and therefore require owner consent for inclusion in historic district.
I'll answer, the answer is yes, but as drafted in a non-contiguous historic district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the Council? I know there are members of the public who want to be heard, so if you wish to be heard, please come forward and share your thoughts.
My name is Jean Sogan. Just as background, which I don't think I've ever told you, I have a Bachelor of Arts in Architecture, a Master's in Town Planning from the University of London, and I staffed the City of St. Paul's first Historic Preservation Commission back in the Dark Ages. I've been involved with the City of Highland Park's Historic Preservation Commission off and on for 20 years, I'm sorry to say. And I've written several of the walking tours and the bicycle tours. I've been, I've been involved in historic preservation for a long time here. And I'm the person who has submitted the nomination for, the city's very first nomination for a non-contiguous historic district. And the outcome that I would hope for tonight is that your policy question would go to the Historic Preservation Commission. But along the way, I think the question is, is a non-contiguous historic district more like a bunch of individual nominations, or is it more like a geographic historic district? And that's an interesting question, and I think that it's, I think it's more like a geographic historic district, and it should have the same kind of framework. But you talk about landmarking without owner's consent as if it's some sort of terrifying cancer. And I think that it's a tool in your toolbox, and it's, the tool is the nuclear deterrent, that when it was, when it was available, it meant that potential buyers would think twice about buying a historic home, because it might be landmarked without owner's consent. And that meant that they would think twice about it, and most of the, what we got before HPC was sellers coming forth. And for a seller and a potential buyer, that six-month or one-year delay made a huge difference. But now what HPC is getting mostly is people who have already bought the property. And if you've already bought the property, the six-month or the one-year delay really doesn't mean that much, because it takes that much time to get the drawings done and such. So the, in terms of preserving our architectural heritage, it was wonderful to have the landmarking without owner's consent, and preferably not using it, just knowing that it was there. But I don't expect you to put that back on the books, but the possibility, a non-contiguous historic district is a really interesting idea, and having, the present requirement is, in order to get it to the HPC, there has to be 25% of the owners signing on. In order to get it from, and then there's various public hearings before HPC, and then the owners have to formally vote. Can I continue talking? Do you...
Unfortunately, no.
What?
No. We have a limit of three minutes per person.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Let me start by saying I love Highland Park.
Please start by saying your name.
And I will continue by saying I am William Levy. I live at 1923 Lake Avenue. My husband, Patrick Shores, and I are the very proud owners of the Mary Adams House, designed by Frank Lloyd Wright in 1905, at the corner of Lake and Laurel. In 2011, we appeared before the Historic Preservation Commission. Jean Sogan was the chair at that time, and I think Mayor Roteran was the, was the City Council liaison. We applied for landmark status, and of course, that honor was granted. And we welcomed feedback from the Commission throughout the process as we applied for certificates of appropriateness, because we felt the Commission had much more experience than we did. We wanted their feedback. Our impression at the time was that the city, in general, and the City Council in particular, recognized and valued historic architecture in our community, and would ardently support preservation and restoration of these important community resources. Unfortunately, that distinct impression has been shattered several times since. There are several examples of disappointing demolitions of historic residential and non-residential architecture here in town. The question is, will our wonderful city stand behind the important values of preservation, or will we allow our neighborhoods to be filled with big white boxes built from lot line to light line after zoning variance after zoning variance? As you consider these important issues facing our city, please consider this: We need to distinguish between votes required to nominate and votes required to approve. That's very important. The Commission should get the opportunity to consider a non-contiguous historic district with less than 100% buy-in, so that that process can be used to educate all of the owners within the proposed district. Not everyone at the start of the process will have sufficient information to make an informed decision. It's that process that will help them develop the knowledge and the information necessary to make informed decisions. That process will also help educate the rest of our community about the value and importance of what are clearly essential elements of our community. The historic architecture tells the story of our history, of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard?
Hello, I'm Patrick Shores. I'm the co-owner of the Mary Adams Home with Bill, and that's at 1923 Lake Avenue. I also am the co-chair of the Homeowners Committee for the National Frank Lloyd Wright Homeowners Committee. The common argument to involuntary landmarking as part of a historic district, or taking away the freedom to demolish a historic home, is homeowners' rights. I hear it all the time. What's happening around here is that homeowners' rights, which have to do with money and power, are overruling Highland Park's history and Highland Park's architecture. Demolishing a historic home not only takes away the architectural history of that structure, it dismantles the history of Highland Park. If we continue with the course we're on, there will be no history left in Highland Park. I challenge the City Council to spend some time, as a group that has members who own historic homes, including an architect, and individuals who have shared with me that historic architecture is important to them, to consider values regarding the importance of Highland Park's history and architecture. What are those values? I compel the City Council of Highland Park to take actions to value and protect our history and architecture. Please keep our ability to have non-contiguous historic districts without 100% owner's consent. For example, the proposed Shaw-Wright Arts and Crafts Historic District is the opportunity to proactively landmark the Frank Lloyd Wright Ward Willetts House on Sheridan Road. This 1901 Prairie House is considered by most architectural historians as the first true Prairie House, and it is in our very own Highland Park. Imagine the fallout if a buyer purchased it, unlandmarked, and chose to tear it down. Please keep our ability to have non-contiguous historic district without 100% homeowners' consent. This will very much enable us to continue to tell the important story of our city and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard this evening before we continue?
Hi, my name is Anthony Gonca. I live in a Howard Van Der Enn Shaw House on Sheridan Road. My wife and I moved to the community, and we've had a wonderful experience learning about the architecture in our town, renovating our house, and keeping it, and contributing to the architectural significance of this town, which is one of the reasons we chose to move here. I'm really concerned that this is even an option, as Tony said earlier. I don't understand how there's anything different between non-contiguous and contiguous historic zoning districts. There are, I can, I can also think of other options in, in this town where this policy could be used to landmark other non-contiguous properties in the city. Consider the boy-built homes that is right west of Sunset Woods Park that are really special houses that were built by community youth that aren't contiguous, and those houses, I mean, that's, that's a whole other subject, but this is an important thing that we need to have. I don't understand why we would consider any, having a zoning, a group zoning district that would require 100% approval, we would never get any applications ever. If you needed 100% buy-in, everybody could just go through the easier process of individually landmarking their house, as opposed to putting forth this proposal that would have to require every one, every owner to buy into that process. It just simply makes no sense. If you're going to amend this, you should just completely remove it from the code, because you would never get any applications ever. And I think that probably is the most important point against, you know, making a decision on this, especially tonight, to not let it go to HPC, not let it be considered, not let the public get educated, not let more information get out there, and I, just, please, let this go through the process and let us have this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Thank you.
Mayor?
Yep.
Mayor, I do want to just comment. I, I know that there are several members of our Historic Preservation Commission here. And I, in speaking to you, I'm also speaking to them as their corporation counsel and making sure that the Open Meetings Act is properly followed. So, we have, as you know, I've given an opinion that members of commissions or the city council at other meetings can attend so long as they are only audience members. No more than a majority of quorum, or, or less than a majority of quorum, which means two members of a seven-member body can speak. So I want to make sure that members of the HPC understand, and several of you are here, that no more than two of you are able to speak at this meeting. The rest have to be audience members.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Tom Corning. I've been a Highland Park resident off and on since 1985. My family and I originally lived in the Brayside neighborhood. And today, my wife and I live several blocks east of here in a 19th century home. We're actually close neighbors with Councilman Ross. And I am a licensed architect in the state of Illinois and a retired structural engineer and general contractor. I have also, in my retirement years, been involved heavily with several 501(c)(3)'s doing bricks and mortar work as a volunteer, and that's my retirement. I've also been on the committee to preserve and restore the Park Avenue dock as a, as an independent citizen. I served on that committee for a year and a half while we tried to rescue that dock and break wall, and we were successful, and we're very excited about that. My comments are very short, and Bill and Patrick have adequately and accurately summarized my view about the motion at hand. So I would simply like to encourage this council to be cautious in all regards as it relates to preserving our historic architecture. I would echo their sentiments that one of the most beautiful things about this community is the diversity of its real estate. It's fabulous within the nation. And in fact, I know that when visitors come here who are from outside, they marvel at the ravines, the architecture, the diversity, the smallness of the houses, the bigness of the houses. This is very, very uncommon. And our history, as has been pointed out, if we allow historic manses to continue to be bulldozed, our history here will gradually disappear. It's bad enough that we can't do anything about those who decide that they want to white and black their beautiful historic edifices with white and black paint and make boxes out of them. That can be fixed. But once we allow the bulldozer to come and take those buildings down, there's no putting the genie back in the bottle. So rather than micromanage my comments and get into the detail, I would just say broadly, again, that anything that you can do as the council to preserve our heritage here, our wonderful architectural heritage, I would encourage it in the strongest way. Now, I'm the first one to admit that having your house designated as a historic home cuts both ways. I understand that, and that's why a lot of people don't want to have it. It limits you, it causes you to add costs, it restricts what you can do within your home. But I'm also a free-market guy, and I understand that once you buy a property, you should be able to do with it what you choose, but also within reasonable limitations. So I'm not one of those who's saying you have to serve them all, but just be circumspect.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard?
Good evening. I'm David Meek. I'm a local zoning attorney. I've practiced in the area of historic preservation as well, both in this community and other communities, including Oak Park. So I have some familiarity with the structure of these ordinances. And I'm speaking kind of with some of that background, and also I have been engaged by the property owner of 175 Prospect, Mark Melman. I just wanted to have a couple of comments about the policy that was enacted in 2017, 2018, taking away the homeowner consent, adding the homeowner consent for involuntary landmarking. Yeah, excuse me. There were some comments made by council members which were reflected in the minutes, which I think have some applicability, and I'd just like to go over a few of those. There were comments, and again, this is paraphrasing because it's from the, the minutes of the But, but generally, an expression by several council members that involuntary landmarking wasn't a solution that helped save homes, that education and with the public, with the households, was needed and effective, and that it was a limited tool, involuntary landmarking, that should be applied to less than a handful of properties, and it only been invoked once. The analogy is, is pretty strong. I mean, involuntary landmarking, for one property, the effect of a historic district designation is the same thing for a property. It's the same constraints on the use of the property. I understand it's a, it's a tool, it's been recognized repeatedly, it has been upheld by courts, but you do have the ability to consider whether, in every case of a historic district, such as in a noncontiguous one, it would actually be appropriate to impose an involuntary landmarking on somebody who objected to it. The, you know, the consequence is the same to, to the particular homeowner. And yes, to Councilman Bloomberg's point about not wanting to resolve issues because somebody had a particular issue, I, I hear that. But here, there was, there was somebody who had filed a petition to demolish, had proceeded through, and it was a pending delay. And then we have a, a body that is, that is alerted, and, or an individual is alerted to, to this and wants to use the landmarking process to thwart that particular demolition. And I, I, I think that this ordinance is, would alleviate that one situation, but it also resolved then the tension that exists in your code. And I think it's the resolution of the tension that should be recognized, not just the individual case that has brought this situation forward. So I, all right, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Cal Bernstein. I'm a zoning attorney in Highland Park, and I'm also representing the contract purchaser of the property that we've been talking about this evening. Let me begin by saying that I too love Highland Park, and I've lived here since 1963, and I have committed 30 years of my, of my time to making this a better community. So whether you're on one side or the other, it doesn't mean you love or don't love Highland Park. I would also note that the ordinance in question was passed over 20 years ago. And since this last 20 years, there has not been one application for a noncontiguous historical district. Why is it this time? Well, this, the reason, it's, it's in the, it's in the submittal that is included in the packet, is the motivation behind this is to stop the demolition of 175 Prospect. Those are not my words. Those are the words that are in the application that's pending before the Historical Preservation Commission. I would also note that we have a member of the Historical Preservation Commission who's got up here tonight and advocated against the ordinance. So Councilman Bloomberg wants to send this matter back to the Historical Preservation Commission. We already, we already have one member's already made up his mind without even hearing what the, what the situation is, or hearing anything about the application about changing the ordinance. I would note that it's been over seven months since the application was filed to demolish 175 Prospect. So it's been 20 years, and it's now been an additional seven months, and there has been no application for the nonhistorical historic district until two weeks ago. And the reason why there, there is, time is of the essence of this, is there's a closing pending on that property, and what's holding it up is the fact that there is this noncontiguous historical district application currently pending. As, as Mr. Meek previously said, I've practiced in front of the Historical Preservation Commission many times. And over the, that 20 years, every client and every matter that I'm aware of, where there's been an application for a demolition, whether there's a delay or not a delay, a demolition permit is issued. So there's a reasonable expectation in this community that if you file for an application of demolition, you go through the process at the Historical Preservation Commission, that you, that, that you have a good, you could good faith rely that a demolition permit would be issued. It has never not been issued in the 20 years since this ordinance was passed. And since the last seven months, since that application was, was pending, both the seller and the contractor, contract purchaser have expended substantial sums preparing the redevelopment of that property. To include 175 Prospect without the consent of the owner, or in this situation also, and the contract purchaser, would fundamentally be unfair, and it would violate the vested rights of the, of going through the existing city process. We ask that, that any, that the 175, that, that, we'd ask that the pending application, excuse me, that the revised ordinance allowed the 175 pending application to go through also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to be heard? No? Okay. Corporation council, I have a question for you. We have an item up for approval, an ordinance amendment for approval. But if there's a suggestion that this be sent back to the Historic Preservation Commission, that would be an amendment, do we first have to take action and then, or can we send this back if that's the inclination of this council?
You act on motions. So right now, there may have been a suggestion, but there is no motion on the table.
No, no, I understand that. But I'm just asking you, in terms of motions from this group, do we have to first have a motion specific to the verbiage that's included in item 12? Or can we take action related thereto, but not specific to approving? For example, can somebody propose that this be sent to the HPC before we take action? Or do we first have to take action?
It's, it's all who you recognize, mayor. There's no, there's no procedural requirement.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to send this back to the Historic Preservation Commission for consideration of this ordinance before us. And I want to add a comment, which is, to not do that, in my opinion, and I'm not casting aspersions on the city council, but in my opinion, that, the failure to do that would be an affront to the commission. This commission spends most of its time hearing applications for teardowns. They're very liberal about that. It's a very painful thing for people who are knowledgeable about historic preservation, but they do it faithfully. This is a commission that is populated by thoughtful people. It is important for them to be able to address a substantive matter of policy and make a recommendation to the city council. And that's the motivation behind my motion.
Thank you.
I'll go next second.
There's a, okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further conversation?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I, I have to say, while I was, I wanted to hear everything that had to be said tonight, I do think that we are based on a structure of commissions and boards and advisory groups. And I think it's only fair that we let the commission have its word, and we're not bound by that word. I would like to hear what the commission, how they would like to weigh in on it before I make my final decision. So I think that it's a very good avenue to take.
Councilmember Center.
Can we, out of respect to these, this pending real estate transaction, bifurcate out this issue in that we potentially explore issue 12 at hand and send it back to the commission, but allow 175 to go as, as planned, given that they already went to the historic commission and were approved and followed the appropriate process?
That's not part of the motion.
Well, I'm going to motion, however, I motion to separate those two issues.
They're on a demo delay until February.
That would be an amendment.
They're, they're in a demolition delay until February. The issue of the closing that was raised by council this evening is also affected by the pending demolition delay. That is not going to be shortened by anything that is before us.
Sure, there's a timing on the demolition delay, but the, the potential decision of this matter significantly and materially impacts the parties involved in that contract.
I, I understand that. So my suggestion would be that we have this motion heard if it gets sent to the commission. I guess the amendment would be to have this returned here, that the commission hear this at their next meeting, and that this return here for our next meeting after that.
Right. And that should not be done after, once your, if your motion that is now seconded and it's on the table is, is voted on, the matter is, this agenda item is, is done. It's been, it's been assigned to the, to the HP, to the Historic Preservation Commission. So mayor, you may want to consider council member Center's request, or maybe the motion maker would consider council member Center's request and amend the motion that's on the table.
It would be to amend, to bring this back on a date certain after the Historic Preservation Commission hearing.
That's right.
You're trying to separate this particular transaction out from our consideration of this.
That's correct, mayor.
That I would not consider as an amendment. I would consider as an amendment having this returned to us on a date certain.
Which gives hope to your.
On an expedited basis.
I will second councilmember Center's.
It hasn't, it hasn't been seconded, you can't.
So the motion.
If I understand it correctly, I, there's a motion, I've agreed to a specific amendment. If the seconder agrees to that amendment, that's what we'll vote on.
That's correct. So mayor, you want to consider the seconder, which is councilmember.
Yeah.
So, to be very specific, the motion is to return this, to refer this to the Historic Preservation Commission for consideration and recommendation of the city council to be at their next meeting, which I believe is this month, on the 25th.
Well, the 25th is your meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it would be sooner than that.
There's this week.
When is, when is the next HPC meeting?
I think, is it the 29th, Joe?
The 29th is a special meeting. I'm sorry. The 29th is a special meeting that we have as a placeholder.
And then our meeting's October 6th.
That will still have this heard well in advance of the closing date of that property.
Is that correct?
For October 6th?
Yes.
October 6th.
Can they, can we request that they have a meeting before ours?
Can you speak against the motion?
It is. It's just a quick turnaround time because it's.
Staff has to prepare, they have to have.
Calendar, Madam Mayor, if I may interject, just let me check the, the calendar. Thank you. We do have a meeting on the 29th scheduled, just as a placeholder.
I thought there was a meeting before.
I did too. Tell me, I thought. I thought I got a notice about one later this week.
We do have a meeting.
Later this week.
Madam Mayor, we do have a meeting on September 11th, which is Thursday. So, open meeting, we could put this on tomorrow morning, then, I mean, tomorrow?
Yes, right.
And be in time for a 6:30 PM on 11th? Would you like that instead?
Yes.
So then the September 11th meeting, it's a scramble, and then we would hear it on our September 25th agenda.
Yes.
I would agree to that amendment.
Mayor, can we just hear from, if they, if they care to share the property owner or the property owner's representative as it relates to that timing?
Sure, they can come forward.
With regard to the timing, currently, the closing's scheduled for next week, and that's what we're, that's what the, it's our contractual terms.
Your, your closing is scheduled before the teardown delay ends?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's your choice. I'm sticking with the amendment I've agreed to.
Counsel, I'm going to just, the, the rest of the council members, I, I've, I've no skin in this game, of course, but I, I think it is highly inappropriate for us to get involved in a personal real estate transaction that is, that people have been utilizing the current zoning and laws to make decisions on. I, I just think this is a huge mistake for us to, to try to interject there. I understand the, the goal here of trying to get this back in front of the Historic Preservation Committee, globally speaking, but to hold up this transaction just does not make logical sense.
Okay. Do you have something to say?
Yeah. I'm sorry, but I, I really do believe in our system, and that's why I wanted to do it, but I actually feel that the one thing, and I don't like to use this, well, the thing that is more, most important is our individual rights on this, and I don't, I can't support it if it's going to delay an individual transaction like that.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to second the motion, and.
Which motion are you seconding?
The, the one he amended.
The one that he made, that you seconded?
Yeah. And I know there's a dilemma, there's a paradox here.
Absolutely.
It's not an easy one. Somehow, somewhere, we got to this impasse in terms of timing, but I, I'm going to go on the basis of the process that I think the historical, you know, has to, commission has to weigh in. has to weigh in and clear the way, one way or the other.
Can I ask a follow-up question to your councilmember Tapia? Sorry, Mayor. The subject property that we're talking about did already go in front of the commission, and the commission approved its demolition. So this feels like a pretty left field, out of left field way to try to save this one residence?
Mayor, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Director Fontaine and then.
Just to clarify, so the commission imposed the, the maximum delay on the property's demolition. So it isn't that it approved the demolition, it was actually very concerned. And the property did meet the standards for the, the greatest extent of delay.
Thank you for the clarification. Let me rephrase. It went through the appropriate process that existed at the time that it was supposed to go through the process and met all the required benchmarks. What, how can we now, today, say like, okay, we changed our mind?
Thank you.
Respectfully, the decision to advance the closing to a date prior to the termination of the teardown delay is, in my opinion, beyond the scope of a clear set of ordinances that the city has abided by. I will also say that property rights are not absolute and inviolate. There is a right of property owners in Highland Park to the preservation of important contributing homes such as this. I appreciate the individual owner's rights and the impact that this decision would have, but the closing can be moved. The, advancing the closing to a period prior to the end of the demolition delay was an independent decision of the property owner.
Okay. So with that, I'll call the question.
Councilmember Breckman?
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Center?
This is for councilmember Bloomberg's motion, correct? No.
Councilmember Breckman?
No.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where to, I'm going to take a pass for a moment.
Councilmember Tapia?
Yes.
Councilmember Littleware?
No.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
I'm, I'm going to say no.
Mayor Rotting?
Aye. So, do we now take a vote? The motion fails? Do we then have a denial motion?
No, so now you are, you can recognize the main question, which is the ordinance that's on the table.
All right. And so with that, I'm seeking a motion to approve item 12.
Second.
This is a motion to approve the ordinance? Is that what you're seeking?
Yes. Yeah. So I need the motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
And Mayor, this, this is to confirm that if this ordinance is passed, the application for, that was recently filed under our existing code concerning the designation in a non-contiguous district would not be grandfathered. That is our, that would be our standard practice.
And the law overall would change so that there is no such option.
That is correct.
Okay.
But it's in keeping with the policy book for the contiguous.
Yes.
Yeah, let me just make a couple, let me just make a comment, because I know we were focused on the one property for a second, and I appreciate everybody coming out here and sharing their sentiments.
Did you receive a second?
I did, for councilmember Breckman.
Perfect. Thank you. I live in a 1800s home. I greatly appreciate the importance of historic homes to this community. I'm really grateful for the commitment we have from residents of this community to ensure that. I don't believe it is our place to tell people what to do with their homes. There are options to do in the sale of real estate to put a deed restriction or restrictive covenant to not allow for demolition of homes. There are other things we can do to help ensure that we maintain historically significant homes. Obviously, you kind of know where I'm going with, with my, with my vote, but I just wanted to, to share my respect for the, the beauty and architectural significance of homes in Highland Parks, but multiple things can be true. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Ross.
I wanted to say that I deeply appreciate efforts to safeguard Highland Park's architectural heritage.
Please continue.
Just not even going to listen to?
Please continue.
Okay. While I can support government action to save municipal architectural treasures, and I, I think of, I'm a native originally 27 years ago of New York City, Grand Central Station and Penn Station, I, I can't support taking individual homeowners' rights and their equity away from them. And I want to say also that, I mean, I think back that about, you know, if we involuntarily landmark private homes, we could deter families from buying here. My husband and I were going to make an offer, and I believe it was an arts and crafts style home in Highland Park, but we didn't after we learned it was historically landmarked, and we could not change it even though we needed to. Future homeowners will likewise need to update historic homes to suit their needs. And I, I want to say that while I have to say no to government imposing landmark status, I wanted to, instead, to honor these great citizens' efforts, and unfortunately, they, a large number of them walked out. I deeply appreciate them, but could we, the city, take a very serious look at far bigger financial incentives than we currently offer to keep people from tearing down historic homes? Can we freeze their property taxes for as long as the house remains substantially architecturally intact? Can this be a choice that, you know, a homeowner, you know, makes and there are adequate incentives, you know, to lead them to do it? Can we dream up some major financial incentives to keep the buildings substantially the same instead of using the heavy hand of government to, to say, no, you, you know, you have no choice in this? So that, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. I thought the state does allow a freeze of eight years if you are landmarked.
Yes, but I'm, I'm talking about, that's clearly not enough. And I, I think that we, we could really look at what will incentivize people to do this. We need incentives to make it a personal choice.
No, no comments from the audience. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Go ahead.
We, we limit what you can do with your property all the time. That's what our zoning is. The value of limiting the ability to tear down significant structures in our community adds to the sense of this community. People moved to Oak Park because of the number of Frank Lloyd Wright houses there. People used to live to Highland, moved to Highland Park because of the historic homes that were preserved here, and there are a number of them. We have a number of homes in our community that are critically important. One in particular was mentioned tonight, the Ward Willetts House, which is in a totally unprotected Frank Lloyd Wright house, probably the greatest example of prairie architecture that Frank Lloyd Wright created. I understand that it is an imposition on an individual's property rights, but it is not a taking. And I say that with the absolute backing of the U.S. Supreme Court. By amending this law, we have made it increasingly difficult to preserve important historic homes in our community. There was an aberration that led to the loss of the involuntary landmarking when that was abused. This council nearly, merely needed to deny the application. It did not need to remove that tool, but it did. I do not see the relationship and policy between that and the policy that is tortuously being applied to the non-contiguous district because it doesn't differ in any way from the policy that applies to contiguous districts. There's no sense to that. Respectfully, both such districts allowed houses to be subject to essentially being landmarked in some instances without the consent of some of the owners. That will still occur in a contiguous district. The value of contiguous and non-contiguous districts transcends the value of landmarking an individual home because it designates a wide swath of the history of this community as inviolate. For that reason, I'm going to vote against this.
Okay. With that, councilmember Tapia.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to vote against it, but less on a point of view about yes or no, I believe in this or not. I just heard presentations today that were very important on both sides to say, you know, that indicate, are indicative that this is a deep philosophical difference between property rights of an individual, free market, which I really respect, and at the same time, you know, how do you preserve the nature of a city's heritage? And that is a paradox that is a very difficult one to navigate. I just feel that we have a Historical Preservation Commission that is tasked with experts in this field, and I don't feel that we have, I don't feel personally that we have benefited from the fullness of what that commission is about and the expertise to help someone like me decide a paradox that either way it's going to be, be a difficult decision. But I don't feel personally I have enough data and a, and a confidence that we have really leveraged the system and the expertise to help us navigate this. So my vote against it is really on the basis of a process. I was hopeful with the amendment that we could buy some time. We were ready to move it up, you know, to this Thursday, and then our very next meeting, look at to the, you know, the situation, you know, Bernstein, you know, Cal Bernstein's client, see if they can negotiate a, a different closing date, which is not necessarily impossible. And we're all kind of working together to buy the time we need so we can make a very difficult decision in a way that's more informed and more educated.
I, I need to speak again.
I'm sorry. I just want to agree with the two of you. Our history, our architectural history is something to be celebrated. I appreciate the passion and the expertise on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm sorry, we won't have their input on this question. Councilmember Ross?
See, that's what I'm really struggling with. I, I feel just, I mean, I hear what two members of council have, have said about process, and that's what I'm really struggling with now. I, I just feel like we can't come up with a, a solution where we allow them, you know, to, to discuss this and, and the, the, the person who is on the verge of buying a home, I, I just can't believe we can't find a solution to give, that they can't move their closing date or, or something. I, I, I do appreciate, it does bother me not to have the process, not to have it go through a commission that, that we have. And, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Are we, are we saying there really is no way to do that?
We have a motion.
I mean, we took a vote.
You voted against it.
I understand.
You voted against it?
You voted against it.
Yeah.
So now we're going to take the vote on the motion that's on the table.
But I mean, it's.
All right, we're going to, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Center?
I'm taking the vote? Sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Breckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Pass again.
Councilmember Tapia?
No.
Councilmember Littleware?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
No.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Mayor Rotting?
No. Item 12, as stated, has been approved. Has passed. Thank you. I am seeking a motion to go into closed session.
No, just to recess? Then we're going to go and continue the budget.
All right. So I am seeking a recess. I'm just going to declare a recess. Ta-da, recess. Okay.
We will be moving to pre-session conference room.
We didn't, we didn't call for a motion. Are we motioning to go into recess?
Yeah, all in.
Oh. All in favor of going into recess? We need a motion?
You can declare it.
We are declaring a recess. We're declaring a recess. Okay. Never mind.
Because I really need to go to the bathroom and get the information to you.
There's no reason for that to be bricks.
It's very pretty, but it's absolutely unusable.
It's not ADA accessible whatsoever.
It's a hazard. What happens for people who are not ADA at all, not compliant?
Yes, Andres.
On a different topic.
Sure.
I know that we just, in the earlier meeting, we talked about opening up the conversation about selling or making it available for redevelopment over here. So, and I know that if we decide to do that, which is, we don't know yet, and that could take years for somebody to come and propose. I just want to ask the question, do we want to spend a million, three, on the East Lot paving when, I don't know, three, four, I don't know, five years from now, we may have a possible redevelopment, or redevelopment or something there?
Have you walked through that parking lot?
Well, I know, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
So, this, yeah, this station would probably be the least likely that we would sell because it's closest to serve the metro station.
This lot?
This lot specifically.
Further down.
Even the southmost portion?
Yeah.
So, potentially, and only because when you get further south, you're going to be limited in the density that you can have because it's across from single-family homes. And so, I think a return on investment may be not as fruitful for some developers. As opposed to, if you look closer to downtown, that's where you can get the six stories of, you know.
All right, I was asking the likelihood question.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like.
Correct, yes.
So that, if we, if that money won't go to waste necessarily five years from now.
Yeah, and it very much represents a need.
Okay, all right.
Why do we want to get it out of dumping in the parking lot? Like, where would we put it if there's no sidewalk or anything, you're just gonna?
We're not talking about the path, we're talking about developing the central train station, East Lot.
But I, yeah, I was going there.
Well, we would just, it's a, we receive frequent complaints about it because people feel it's not safe. If they're coming through, heading towards the parking lot, all of a sudden, they're just, you know, they're coming through the woods.
In the parking lot.
Yeah, and now they're in the parking lot, and potentially, there's no interactions with cars. We've applied for at least two different times for grants to get that reconfigured, and we have not received those. And so now, we're sort of looking at it like, okay, we're just gonna have to do the work, so.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Parking deck structural repairs, I just want to point that out because we do have, the parking decks are wonderful for parking, but they are, there's maintenance, but that goes with those, and we're gonna have to do some work on both parking decks.
Okay.
Does that potentially include some beautification, or some brightening, or repainting, or?
The ones with the plants that are coming up on the sides? The Dursmiths Parking Garden is how it was originally designed.
We have, this particular, this is some structural repairs, so nothing, nothing pretty, but, but we do have some money in parking lots. Let's see, it might show it here, where we're gonna do some beautification, we've been improving lighting in the Port Clinton Garage, we've done some painting, and we have some other future plans for some kiosks. And so, we used to have, like, old paper advertisements, or saying, hey, here's where the businesses are. We're going to work towards having something similar to what we have in our downtown, like the kiosks that can be lit, and then we can change remotely, and advertise, and, you know, if business has changed, it's not like you have to repaint the whole thing, you can just put it on the kiosk, so. Same thing, water distribution, again, lead service line replacement, that'll start this year. We expect it to last a couple of years, at least for this first phase. That's, that's all I E P A loan funded. There are some small portions of that that will come out of the water fund, but generally speaking, it's I E P A loan, up to 10 million. We expect it's closer to 7.9. The Sheridan Road, Sheridan Road Edge Cliff to the north end, that was something that we had planned for this year. It will now go early next year, we have designed fully complete, it'll be an early project for, for 2026. That's a street that has no water main whatsoever, and so, there's a lot of work there with water main, sanitary sewer. We're basically redoing all the infrastructure on that, on that street. And then, plus a resurface, getting it into the drain, everything else. Again, there's the Richfield Avenue road that will be redone. The water plant, we've been replacing sections of the membranes, the membranes last about 10 years, and we're past that, they went in in like 2014-ish. So, we are doing the last phase in 2026, so we're excited to get that going. We'll have three pretty new sections of membranes, and that gets us back up and fully running, and now we can stage them in the future so we don't have to do the entire, the entire section of membranes every, every 10 years. And then, in our equipment fund for Public Works, the only, the only thing that is shown is this combo sewer truck, which is a truck that can do the vacuuming and the jetting, and you can also excavate with those. They're truly a multi, multi-use type of a piece of equipment.
Very cool. Do they make an electric version?
They do not, they do not. Yeah, it's, we have started, we, we look at all those things, and, but it, the larger pieces, the larger they get, it gets more and more difficult. Although, like, our loader, we, that loader's a humongous piece of equipment, and it's a hybrid. So, when we can, we go hybrid.
Okay.
This is, again, the, the parking deck expansion joints that we were talking about. Here's the Port Clinton Garage kiosk interior wall painting that is shown in 26. We have some exhaust fans at the firearms training center, boiler at the senior center. And then, our forestry capital includes our tree planting plan that we do, our C B D work. Just on the forestry side, we have four certified arborists on staff with the city, or Tree City USA. That application process for the, for our 45th year in a row, opens tomorrow, actually. So, so 45 years.
Between that and the Monarchs.
Yes, yes, and then, yeah, and then we continue to expand our, our pollinator garden.
Do we save our comments for the end, or?
Totally. For me, I get to interject. If you don't mind, that'd be great, thank you.
The city over the last 10 years have almost $50 million, and I received grants. So, it's, yes, a lot, a lot of projects on here, but that's definitely a positive.
Well done.
Not from us.
The C B D, R B D maintenance, so we, last year, we produced, put, let the council with a dedicated contract for maintenance in the C B D. We always had contracts that covered C B D and R B D, but this was dedicated strictly to those, so that put more hours and personnel in those areas for pulling weeds, cleaning up garbage, cleaning up gum, stuff like that. So, that's in addition to city staff that comes in every Friday, we do the street sweeping. Our big street sweeper that does the, the roads comes in every Friday in the C B D and R B D. So, lighting, so the lighting, the newer lighting, like in R B D, all now, we have remote access to it, so we can see it and monitor it from remote, you know, remotely, and then there's, there's warnings, it's like smart lighting, versus the old way, which we do have in a lot of areas where you have to do like a nighttime patrol, where we ask police to, when they're out in the middle of the night, to let us know if there's lights out. But the new stuff will tell us, hey, bulb is out. So, that's nice. Holiday lighting has become, as we're aware, a full-time, year-round thing. So, that has to create some, some challenges for us in the maintenance side of things. So, because typically, we would restring and trim, and then re, you know, and then put the lights back. So, now, because they're on all year round, we sort of hit this area or the time period where we're gonna have to take some of those lights down to do the work, and then that's upcoming here, yeah, right now. So, so bear with us while we go through and get some of these, some of these lights restringed. So, typically, trees in the C B D are turned on a seven-year cycle. We do about 70, 75 trees, we replace, just through attrition, about five to 10 trees per year. Of course, anything hazardous, or, you know, we get complaints, hey, the tree branches are touching the business, stuff like that, we'll come in there and just, we'll kind of spot-trim those. Trash collection, so we have six days a week throughout the city, and then in the C B D, R B D, we add additional collections in the R B D, like, for example, during Ravinia Park events. And of course, you know, staff is monitoring receptacles, like our new, like our new recycling and refuse receptacles. Just note that, you know, these are made, you know, or designed really for more pedestrian traffic, and not, not designed to be the sole garbage place for a business. You know, so it works best when there's a little bit of partnership, so if there's, if there's businesses that use a lot of single-curf cuffs, you know, ice cream, coffee, whatever it is, and they'll fill them up before the, you know, before the end of the day, because things are overflowing. We've had different businesses in town that, you know, they'll have their staff pull that garbage and, and sort of work with us, and that works the best, because otherwise, we can never keep up when those businesses are busy. This is just a picture of our, of our somewhat new at this point, our bike racks, and our new, some new flowers, and our garbage and refuse.
Keep your questions till the end, please.
No, it's a really good comment.
Go for it.
I have to tell you, I was one of the people who really complained a lot, because I walk everywhere, and the garbage cans are overflowing. It is amazing, the improvement from last year to this year. I am so impressed that, I'm sorry, I said something, but it really was.
Go ahead.
It's noteworthy, it really is noteworthy.
Thank you, so the maintenance contractors will, even if it's not technically their job, so empty the garbage. If we see something like that, we will pull that garbage and get it done, so.
That's great.
It's working beautifully.
Our communication plan, so we start notifications during the design process. Once that project is, is moving forward, we'll be in design, we'll send notification letters, we'll have open houses, we keep the city website updated. Once construction starts or begins to start, we will send out a construction letter somewhere, we can see here, we use our signs that are placed in those construction areas, and then we use that same symbol on the envelope so people hopefully can correlate that, that messaging and realize, okay, this is something affecting me construction-wise. We also use sign boards, we've written that into the contracts for our contractors, when they come in, they have to bring their own sign boards, they're not using the city's sign boards, they, they put that out to provide additional notification. We use our door hangers, we've been emailing out our door hangers as well. So, in addition to physically putting them on the house, then we also email that same hanger out to the public that says, hey, this is what you've received on the door. Of course, social media and, and the website. This is our, just a screenshot of our, of our C I P website. I, I would encourage you, you know, whenever I look at another town, maybe to see how much they have on their C I P website, I'll tell you, it's, it's not, most are not like ours, especially for a community our size. So, we have a lot of projects, a lot of things going on, so.
What are the colors, Yumi?
If you, if you scroll down, they'll show, like, in this case here, the, the red is asphalt street rehabilitation, and the smart is shown in that gold color, so they'll, because I can't scroll, and I can't show you, but there's, they designate it just based on what type of service or what type of pavement in this particular case is getting done.
And that's to Burton on the map.
Yeah, taking advantage of them.
Yes.
They're actually gonna paint the streets in those colors.
So, speaking of pavement, so our rehabilitation program, we take a multi-pronged approach, but it basically starts with our survey that we do every five years, that's due in 2026. And so, that's the van or the, or the truck, the equipment that comes through. They check the street conditions, and they check the base deflection testing, so they'll check to see how, how strong that base is underneath the surface. They also analyze the surface, because sometimes on some streets, the surface is bad, and the base is good, that'll give us an idea of what we can do in that situation versus, hey, the base is bad, the whole thing needs to come out. We also look at, of course, water and sewer and infrastructure needs, that all has to be balanced in that, in that approach. So, again, once they do that, they will generate a number, a P C N number, pavement condition number, and that number will be a basis for us to rank our streets. And that's not the only thing we look at, like I said, we have to look at underground infrastructure. Perhaps this street here, you know, needs water and sewer, we will have to line that up in our water and sewer budgets or funds to, to coordinate that work. P C N numbers basically go from 100 to zero, or in this case, 10. So, we had a goal, and last year we presented, was to get all of our streets to a 70 or above. Currently, we're about 80% that are at 70. So, what we had proposed last year, staff had proposed an increase in spending on streets, street rehabilitation, and we, we had asked for $5 million a year in streets over the next five years. So, that's what went into the 2025 budget, that's what we're currently doing right now.
And so, when everybody complains about street construction everywhere, it's because we're doing street construction everywhere.
Yes, we are, we're doing, we're doing, this is more, taking the C B D out, which was a, was a large project by itself. Generally speaking, we would do about 2 million, maybe 2 and a half million, so we're basically doubling it with the 5 million. But in 26, just given budget, the budget numbers we had to hit were at 3 million, so we are 2 million down from that, from that plan, just, just to point that out.
Are you still gonna hit the proposed, even with the reduction?
We'd like to do 5, but we're only putting 3 in the budget.
So, you won't hit, but you won't hit the proposed then?
No.
We'll hit 3 million.
No, 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 we're not gonna get to the 70.
No, 100%.
100%, that's 70.
Well, we're working towards it.
Right.
Back in the day, it was like 25%, it was ridiculous. So, we're making great progress, but it's gonna slow down a little bit because we have other.
I understand, I just want to set expectations, like, you're proposing, but, so you'll be proposing 100 for this current year? Or like, proposed by what, 100% by what?
When, when, when do we think we're gonna hit that, is what is.
We were, we, when we ran our analysis, we, now granted, $5 million doesn't go, yes, five years.
Five years.
Yeah, that, that was the plan.
Even with the reduction?
No, no, not without the reduction. If, if we were to stay at the $5 million budget number each year for the next five years.
But should we change the, the metric? If you're saying we have less money, which I understand, should, should you say?
Well, our goal is, our goal is still to get to a P C N of 70, but we don't say five years of this anymore.
So, it's still aspirational without a timeframe.
Yeah, but should we have a timeframe?
Yeah.
We can get to it as part of the conversation.
But if you think about the 10 years, right, and you look at it, it's like, so you, because we, you know, like, the lead line replacement came in before, you know, with no warning, basically. So, that's now a different movement of dollars, we have to, we have a deadline for that replacement.
I understand, but to put a metric without a timeline doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, our preference is not though to lower our standard, just because of the funding availability.
We are aiming for.
So, I'd rather keep the standard, and as funds are available, or we find grants, and we're able to invest more money, our streets is one of our greatest priority.
And, and we have done that, where we've said, we're spending this much, and then we have a little bit more left at the end of the construction season, or a little bit more efficiency based on where projects are located, and we go, you know what, let's just add this in.
I, I mean, I understand, I think that putting, even a, a range, like, in the next five to 10 years.
Don't be such a consultant, Andres.
Just a metric without a deadline, isn't it?
Sure, yeah.
It's a timeline, doesn't make sense.
It offends him.
All right, continue on, here's till tomorrow.
Okay, so, these are very tentative lists, we're proposing for next year, given that $3 million funding mark. So, this is just street rehabilitation, asphalt paving, these streets here.
I thought Lincolnwood was on there, is that off?
Lincolnwood is this year.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so we are, we are doing, we couldn't get all the Ravinia area streets done in this year's program, but early next year, we'll hit the rest of them, but I believe Lincolnwood is on this year.
Andres is gonna ask you about Blackstone.
I believe you have Blackstone.
No, I have Burton and Blackstone.
Oh, okay.
I know, I know, that's what I thought, it's good, they're on there, yeah.
So, this is our smart, so then we also do a smart program, service maintenance at the right time. These are streets that have a good base, that don't necessarily need a full resurface, just the surface is bad, and they don't need any other work, they don't need water main, they don't need curb, so we can come through there and do a quicker resurface job on these streets here. And then our concrete to composite, which is basically, you know, concrete streets are great when they're new. As they age, they're difficult to maintain, and they're expensive to maintain. You patch them, and we can do some patching, and people don't like it, it creates another joint. So, what we've been doing is trying to overlay those streets and then call it a composite. But it's asphalt over that concrete, because the concrete makes a wonderful base.
Right.
It's hard. And this is our concrete patching, we still need that in, in the areas that we can't get to for the asphalt resurfacing, so.
So, the next slide that we want to do, we just want to provide an introduction to it, because we haven't presented a slide like this in, in the past. So, certainly, as the council knows, we have a comprehensive budget process. Our budget is based on the city's priorities, our mission, our values. We look at our fees and our taxes and everything that we charge on a regular basis. And you saw earlier today, the, you know, full gamut of different types of fees, where we're looking at increases. So, we take advantage of everything that's available to us by state law, as well as other considerations that are available to us pursuant to our home rule authority. And we diversify our revenue. So, we look at a lot of times maximizing our revenue, so we're not reliant on property taxes, as we saw earlier. And so, we look at charges for services, we look at sales tax revenue, and that's why a lot of times, that investment helps yield a, you know, better return for us. That being said, we are also looking at an 8% tax increase for next year, which is important for us to be able to do everything that we want to accomplish. When, as a staff, we take a look at the budget, it is important for us to identify what are all the needs that we have, and then we make it work to present to you a balanced budget with what are our greatest priorities. And that's what our expenditures are based on our revenue coming in. Want to just identify a number of major projects that we feel are very critical, but we're just not able to include in this budget because of everything else that's happening. So, I want to highlight just a couple of them. So, the very top one, the 10 million, is the pedestrian bridge. We've got a $2 million grant that will expire if we don't let this project by next October, November? By next November. So, we had wanted to include it this year, but unfortunately, we just couldn't make it work, just given all the other priorities and where we're estimating revenue to come in. So, we're looking at some maintenance, but again, that's still an important project for us that we're gonna try to include in next year's budget. The other project, we talked about the street resurfacing, so again, ideally, we'd like to put in 5 million in the budget. But again, we are, one, if I could just finish my thought, okay. We are putting revenue in the budget, again, based on maximum amount that we can for the capital plan. Waverly Road, we just want to talk about this. This is an important project that we've been putting on for many years, but it's $3 million on one small roadway. And so, it's a lot of investment, but it's full utility improvements, as well as roads, and so, huge infrastructure investment, but we're just kind of postponing it and trying to patch and do maintenance as long as possible. Eventually, that may become an emergency project for us, but again, $3 million is a big price tag. And then, some things like that we've heard from the council, so for example, Port Clinton possible redevelopment. It's on our radar, it's gonna be in our business development strategic plan, but just so you know, it's not reflected in our 10-year capital plan for right now. So, just want you to know, again, a lot of great needs that we have, that we just are not able to include in the budget, but we do feel like we are in the right place in terms of our fees are benchmark compared to our comps, and so, we're getting maximum revenue from those areas that we can, and very important is that we are diversifying our revenue. And so, that's really textbook of what you want to see from a municipality is revenue coming from a lot of sources, so we're not reliant on one source of revenue.
Yumi? Please, I just didn't want you to move from that slide, the pedestrian bridge. I, I'm just gonna share, my husband writes over it all the time. He says that the rebar is exposed, the concrete, you know, is separating. He says he's worried about it collapsing, so, you know, I, I don't know, just wanted to pass that along.
For sure, well, we do inspections, and so, it shouldn't collapse by any means. We do inspections on it regularly, but without a doubt, it is a need, it's just a $10 million, you know, expense.
It's been on this list for probably 12 years, at least?
Almost as long as assault, though.
That doesn't make me feel.
No, 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 but the problem is the cost, you know?
Right, but, but if something terrible happened, you know, I, I guess, it, it is concerning to me that, you know, he eyeballed it as an architect, and is, is saying, this is, this is worrying me.
Right. Well, I think at a certain point, it will get closed.
Yeah.
And, you know, there are other bridges across the highway that are less open to bicyclists, and that's why when you raised the ADA question, my first thought went to, like, if you're on Lake Cook Road trying to cross the highway, that's not very ADA accessible at all. And so, to that point, if we can't get the 10 million for the pedestrian bridge, then we certainly need to figure out how people can get across via the other bridges, both on bike and on foot. So, John?
Just on that topic, is there an opportunity to reapply for that grant in a future year, or is that, that it?
Generally, it's.
The questions are real quick, is can it be repurposed for some lots?
No, it can't be repurposed for something else unless you apply separately. And, and we do apply for every possible grant that we can, that we're eligible for. Generally, it's not viewed favorably when the state or federal government gives you funding, and then you're like, sorry, not using it, you know, and so, they do remember that for future applications. So, we do want to do our best to try to include this in here, but just want you to know, again, you heard everything else that we're doing. We're doing $40 million of capital, you know, next year, that's, that's a lot. But we do have also additional needs that we just can't fit with everything that was happening.
Can I add another need, and that is the place for numbers?
That's, we've got, we've got $500,000 in the budget over the course of two years, so total $1 million.
But that's my point, is I'm not sure that that's gonna be.
Exactly, right, exactly.
And so, you know, unless we want to start fundraising, that's another capital need, I feel that potentially should be on this list versus us going out to the public and asking them for funds.
Yeah, and until we really know kind of what that expense is, that's, that's when we will really kind of look at all of our projects and prioritize. You know, the other thing is, again, in '27, we've got construction for a public service center and fire station 34. Significant need for that project, but again, until we have a num, like, a preliminary estimate of truly what that's gonna cost, it's just in there right now, based on, yeah, those costs. We do have a power, we want to give you an update on the Sheridan Road sidewalk project.
I just want to be sure people have had their chance to ask their questions on the C I P before we move on to this, if that's okay. Are there any other questions, or, because we make them hold their questions.
Yes, yes.
Any other, yes, Andres.
You know, on the lightscaping, there had been conversations last year about the catenary lights.
Catenary.
Catenary. I didn't see them on here.
Correct, that's not in the budget. So, as the council may recall, Second Street, there was support to move forward and not to have those lights that would go across the roadway.
You and I lost the vote on that one.
You asked us to take a look at other options, we did look at possibly streaming lights from building to building, that's not feasible. We could come back as a future policy consideration to take a look, but now, we're, we're basically gonna be tearing up the infrastructure that we just laid last year in order to put concrete, if the council does want to do something like that. It's a, it'd be a construction project if now we want to put concrete posts in the pavement and.
We lost about, you and I were in favor, and everybody else said no.
Well, I had advocated for re.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, right.
Okay, and then, holiday lighting, what, what time do the lights go on?
Like, of day?
Of day, what time, yeah.
Dusk?
Okay, so, I just want to make a case that during the holidays, people are shopping during the day, and so.
You want the lights on?
I want the lights on during the day, during the holiday season, because it's kind of crazy, right? Like, the stores close at 5:00, and then the lights go on. It's like, come on, you know, where's the holiday spirit? I think that we should look at.
If everyone is comfortable with that, we could re-provise.
Sure.
Are they low light?
They're, they're LEDs.
Okay, that's all right.
And then the other, I, I know we've had a round and round of the tree trimming, and I understand, you gotta have a schedule, and you just can't go willy-nilly and trim whenever, you know, and you have a schedule, but we, we just keep having trees that are overgrown, like, at least in the C B D, you know, like, right in front of, and maybe you've trimmed them.
They took care of them.
They all trimmed.
I know, but it's, it was a problem for a while, and then we finally trimmed.
So, it sounds like you guys have a schedule.
Yes.
But is it frequent enough?
Yeah.
Is seven years not enough?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our.
Yeah, people do want us to trim more than arborists and bots, and to the detriment of the health of the tree. That's the other thing that we just need to keep in mind of. So, certainly, if there's a hazard, it'll be addressed right away.
I mean, fair enough, right, arborists, I, I believe in them, but it's just, you're walking down Second Street, and people are ducking, you know, and they've, and they've been there for a while. So, I, I would surmise that the arborist, I'm not in favor of that. So, I wonder if we just, if it could be a little bit shorter span, time.
Thank you, John, and then you?
Potential question on the fire station, but first question is, is the I G A with high wood done?
No, no.
Okay, good.
Which I G A?
The fire I G A.
The resolution, okay?
Did we give them notice?
Oh, no, we have a meeting set up with them, so, no, it is not, yeah, so that should.
So, my question is, that, the fire station on 22, right, that we're talking about?
Yes.
And those are the people, those firemen.
That was, that, that fire station and that service area existed before the I G A?
Understand, but some portion of those firemen are serving highways, right? My, my question is, how much of the need of a new firehouse is the direct or indirect result of us needing extra capacity to serve high wood? And if any at all, can we include some of the capital cost of that building in our contract?
Oh, 100%, yes, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we wholly surround high wood, so, and.
It would make sense to, but just at the moment, it's the obsolescence of the station.
Yeah, that's all I, yeah, as you showed me, I totally appreciate the need for it.
Your, your question is capacity.
Um, it's morally, is there potential economic benefit that we haven't considered? I get from like a P and L perspective of the cost in and out, like, we're, we're gonna redefine that.
And we can totally use the data to figure out the proportionality of high wood to Highland Park residents that are being served out of that station.
That's right, our current contract doesn't include any consideration of any of our equipment or capital costs. And because at the time, high wood just couldn't afford it. In order to get that agreement done, our feeling was, you know, it's better to get some revenue, because we were responding to them anyway, than no revenue at all, but we do feel now that it's time to make this that.
But to your point now.
We got this in the, we have to, much of the actual cost of the new facility.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, thank you.
And Yumi?
Thank you. One, three separate, three questions. One of the items was something like $170,000 for forestry. It was way back, I just was wondering, you know, why the number is so low relative to every other investment?
Forestry capital projects.
Forestry capital projects, like, couldn't we, I, I've asked that every year, couldn't we, you know?
Do you want more trees?
Put more trees, just budget more for that, that, that was a question, but I've asked it. asked it in previous budget iterations.
Okay.
Um, the, the, uh, I don't, did, did, we, um, was it on any of the slides, the Green Bay Road project?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, twenty twenty-six, twenty-eight?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, um, it, I wanted to ask if we can consider, um, uh, as, as other, uh, as I've noticed, had, with Green Bay Road construction, like, in Glencoe area, to keep the two-way traffic going, there seems to be a way to keep two-way traffic going, I think it'll be just an enormous hit to retail, almost catastrophic hit to retail, and, and it, I've seen other cities.
Like, they had both ways going on one side, and both ways going on the other side.
Exactly, I think, I think, I honestly think that's the only reasonable way to do it without killing retail, so that's one question I hope we can consider.
And this for our residents, yeah, of course, yeah.
And, right, our residents, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, and the last piece is just my own invention here, um, but looking through the budget, um, I haven't finished going through the budget, but, um, it dawned on me that so many of my questions are about improving landscape and, and trees, and I'm gonna propose this idea since we're looking at a master plan, we're about to, you know, issue an RFP, or a PQ, uh, it might be an RFP, Gita said, but in any event, um, that, and, and keeping in mind, until recently, I was liaison to the park district, they're doing a green plan, um, I, I wondered if, if we could consider doing our own green plan, where, in, in tandem with a master plan, where we consider how, how we want whatever master plan we consider to be greened, um, and not, not that it would interfere with the master plan, that, that could it, could it happen in tandem, because that way, whenever we look at any project, we're always also thinking, what about the landscaping, what about, you know, and, and anyway, so that was a thought that literally dawned on me flipping through the, the budget.
I mean, it's not part of the scope, so I guess if the direction is from the council to include that as part of the.
Well, I think when we get into the master plan conversation, you wanna be sure that green is part of the master plan conversation.
I, I, I do, but I feel like it deserves its own attention, that, 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 the, this master plan, in all likelihood, it took us twenty-five years to do this one, I, we're gonna be, have that master plan for a long time to come, I'd love to have a green, I'm calling a green plan, I'm copying the park district, but a master plan for trees and landscaping that is, you know, going in parallel with, with the master plan, and, and everything is framed, as I said, but it, it, th, these are plans that we're going to have, are going to be our guideposts for, for years to come. And, and I'd love, instead of these one-off, oh, you know, Andres is a comment, couldn't we do a little landscaping here, or a little landscaping there, but it's part of an overarching vision we have.
A place and not a project. I think it should be in the parking lot for the moment, because we're talking about the ten-year CIP, but I understand that you wanna make sure that that's layered in when we're having that master plan conversation, does that make sense?
It, it, it does, I.
It's like, it's on a parallel track, it's not.
It's given its own due importance.
I hear you, absolutely, thank you for mentioning that, thank you, Prissa?
Just a quick question, when you are, like, looking at the redoing the streets, and which ones you're deciding each year to do, how, how is that determined, like, to hit that seventy percent?
That was the PCN, where they go through, they have the.
But is there like, I guess it's more of?
It's a truck that literally can read through, down into what is the base, what is beneath it, it's really not just the surface, the, the SMART is where the surface gets.
More of a question of like, if, you know, I notice streets, or I hear from people, like, oh, how come my street isn't on the list?
You can tell that we do it based on data, and not just on.
Okay, it's not just like a calling it up, and.
Yeah, this is a, we have this, as a, as a backup slide here, but this is a, a unit, I think it's an updated vehicle at this point, but they use this with these sensors on it, and it'll look at surface condition, and it'll also have, has a, a unit that does deflection testing, which that's what it's doing there, it's pressing down on the pavement, and it gives it a rating to say, okay, what's the base, and so, that's how we, we use that as a, as a basis for our determination to rank the streets, and then we look at it for underground infrastructure, is there a grant, are we coming through here next year for this other project, you know, so we try to, you know, work that and time that out, so, and it, so you will have in some occasions, hey, this street's getting done, but mine's a little bit worse, and it's like, well, this one needs water main, and we need to work that into the, into the process.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just near, even in my area, when I hear from neighbors, like.
Yes, yes.
And I think there's like a couple of webpages on our website that talk about how we assess streets, and it's such a great link to give to people, 'cause if they're like, eh.
It is, yeah, and you can see, we keep it on the website, you have, we have the full rankings as far as the numbers go, yeah, so people can look and see where their street ranks, and again, there's, it's more to it than that, so I just caution, but, but you can, yes, definitely.
Yeah, it's a good resource to, yeah.
Okay.
We're not, we're not doing the architect's presentation tonight, right, or are we enclosed?
Architect's presentation?
I'm sorry, the, the.
No, no, that's, we're talking enclosed about things that might involve.
But we, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, are, are we going, yeah?
We are still having closed session, you can thank Annette for this long reading. I'm teasing you, Annette.
We found a policy question, but just wanna answer council member's question.
I'm sorry, yeah, I shouldn't have asked it.
Yeah, so, our tree canopy here has shown, uh, we, you know, this is based on twenty-seventeen data, it's the latest layup, LiDAR data that we have, but it does show our neighbors and, uh, where we rank as far as, as canopy coverage, so you can see Highland Park there at forty-nine point eight percent, if we remove forty-one, which is, you know, runs down the, the center of town, basically, we're, you know, fifty-four point two percent.
Nicely done.
Which is ni, which is, you know, which is higher than, like, forestry or Philco. So.
Great.
And we, we plant approximately three hundred and fifty trees a year, sometimes it gets up to four hundred, as I know, I've stated before, our arborists go out and tag each individual tree at the tree farm, sometimes, it's not even a funding issue, it's more so finding, you know, three, four hundred quality trees, while everybody else is doing the same thing around the same time of year, so, uh, right now, we're projecting for twenty-twenty-five, removing approximately three hundred, three hundred and fifteen trees, and planting approximately three hundred and fifty trees.
Okay, so we have one policy question, we just would like your feedback on, that's okay?
So, Sheridan Road sidewalk?
Yes.
Oh, God, yes.
Whatever it takes, whatever you need.
All right, so, uh, we've been talking about ten years, so everybody's pretty familiar with it, but it's a five-foot sidewalk that runs from Roger Williams to Cedar Dean, and it, it's closing a gap in our sidewalk network, and it also provides access to Roswell Beach, which obviously is a popular destination, because of the terrain, there's gonna be areas that need retaining wall, which does make it a little more complicated than your average sidewalk project. So, IDOT is also doing, uh, two culvert replacement project.
I think they know the overview.
Okay, got it. So, uh, IDOT recently notified us that they are pushing this project from what they originally had told us was twenty-six to twenty-seven, so if they're gonna build it in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, is what they're saying, so we have been working to align our project up with IDOT, and IDOT has now pushed it from twenty-five, and then to twenty-six, and now to twenty-seven.
Oh, no, 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 they pushed it from twenty-three?
Well, that's true, Mary. That's true, it has moved several times, so, so the city, uh, we have funding in the budget, proposed budget for next year to do the work, and we have grant funding for this.
Do it. All right, you're saying yes, you're saying yes.
There will be additional costs.
There's an additional three hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we do it this way, I know, I'm just saying, I'm not doing it, 'cause I don't wanna pay that money, I, I'm.
What do you say, John?
Going with IDOT.
That's predates me.
I'd say yes.
I'm yes, you're, what?
You, did you count me?
Yes, so five say yes, one doesn't wanna talk, and the others are saying.
Why do you say no?
Don't ask me again.
But we are going to ask for the money, we're going to.
Well, we get the one, was it the one point eight?
But, but, I mean, I, when I spoke to you about it, you said that we, we could see about getting refunded the money that.
The three thirty.
I thought so, no?
We will do our best, so for example, doing it on our own means we have to apply now for state permits, um, we have to oversee resident engineer, you know, do all that, so, yeah, we will definitely ask IDOT to reimburse us for these costs, because the idea was this project should've gone parallel to theirs, so we were asked, but it's unlikely, but we are definitely gonna ask.
Julie Morrison is very well aware, and has been working with us to try to coordinate with IDOT.
Okay.
Um, and are there more, uh, never mind, I was gonna say CMAP and the lack of sidewalks in Lake County, and is there any funding opportunity there, is that just the ITEP grant that we already?
We have ITEP, and we have a DECO grant, a DECO grant for one point six million dollars, and, and that one, now, we have reached out to DECO a couple times, asking, hey, because everything expires next year, can we get an extension on a DECO grant, uh, we have now received an answer on that.
That's DCEO?[1674.24]